Here we go. Looks like we're live.
Alrighty. The time is 6:33 and we are now in our new home at Cook County Courthouse in the Commissioner's Room. Feeling kind of fancy this evening and with us tonight is Mike Roth, Michael Gary, Bill Lovis, Ben Peters, and Patrick Knight and I can't quite see but I'm assuming is Chris Hood with us tonight?
On the phone we've got Chris.
Phone, okay.
Kim and Craig.
Okay. And Counselor Craig Schulte then, Chris Hood, a city attorney, and of course Kim Dunsmar. Okay, thank you very much. All right, and with that said, it is time for Open Forum. Is anyone here for Open Forum this evening?
I am, Mayor Benson.
Alrighty.
And other things, just would like to make a comment. Hi Linda Jurick, Executive Director of the Cook County Chamber of Commerce and Visit Cook County. I was out of town and unable to attend the City Council meeting of March 13th. Prior to my departure, I shared on behalf of the city, the information on the ADA restroom trailers and the needs for our downtown community. The business community was asked to provide feedback and opinions on the most suitable solutions during a summer when City Hall and the public washrooms will be reconstructed. I believe there was resounding support for an ADA restroom trailer. Keeping in mind, many of these businesses are asked for their bathrooms to be used repeatedly throughout the summer and they were anticipating a greater need in ADA accessibility. The Grand Marais community is reliant on visitors to maintain our tourism economy. A recent study that we've completed at Visit Cook County shows that we have 1.2 million visitors per year in Cook County. While out of town, I was informed by members of the VCC team and the business community that the council voted favorably in support of the ADA restroom trailer, just had not decided on which trailer to select. Administrator Roth also attended and informed the Grand Marais Business Coalition of this favorable vote, which was very, very much well-accepted. I then listened to the meeting of last week, March 20th, where the trailer discussion again came up. And during that meeting, it was noted that affordability was not a problem, that there's 10 to, 9 to 10 million in capital reserves for the city. In fact, that there was no thought on where the money was going to come from, the park board, capital reserves. If you recall, you had quite a discussion on that. And Administrator Roth said it won't be a problem. And undecided expenditures at that time, there was talk of no shelving being ordered for the liquor store, no furniture for your new building. And that seemed to be statements used against the expenditure on a motion that was already approved for an ADA accessible trailer. I am now completely baffled on the vote of last week to table this decision. Not one counselor could make a motion last week on which trailer to purchase. The approved motion of, to purchase a trailer on March 13th, I literally was listening just going, what? And now, I noted that on your agenda for this evening, there's no additional conversation on what is a tabled discussion. It wasn't a tabled decision, I didn't think, it was a tabled discussion to make a future decision. How does a yes vote get tabled? And how does that tabled vote have resolution? I am the business, are we supposed to understand, myself and the business community, that a tabled vote is a vote of no for the ADA restroom trailer? A tabled vote is a no vote? That's what we're supposed to understand? Bottom line is, when you ask for input from your business community and then completely disregard that input, there is no building of trust in community. When you state publicly that you will not provide public restrooms in your own facilities, i.e. the liquor store, because you're not going to afford that expense, but the expense can then be pushed back onto your business community without thought, it feels rather tone deaf. The entire situation actually feels a little bit tone deaf. And for our local business community and the services, and more importantly, the decisions that we count on by our city counselors, we count on you to make decisions that support our community, our members in the community, our business community that have the livelihood to do business here, that they count on it in our community. And I just wanted to express that I, I'm baffled as somebody who's worked in these types of organizations with these types of decisions most of my adult life, that there isn't clarity in the next steps forward. Again, it's not on the agenda for tonight. Tabled means what? I know I'm going to get the question, so thank you for your time.
Thanks Linda.
Thank you. And with that, there is no one else. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We do need to make one change to the consent agenda and move item three, the Cedar Grove declarations, down into the main agenda because we're going to have a resolution on that. And I think that is it unless anyone else has anything, anything about bills or meeting minutes?
You're going to add something to the agenda too for City Administrator?
I was told just.
Okay, yeah.
I hope that's correct, that's what I was told.
Yeah. It's just going to be a statement she's going to make.
Yes. Yep. So, oh, alright.
So we're going to take that and move it down to any particular place?
Um.
First thing. First thing, excellence.
We can put it above item E.
Okay.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Sounds good to me.
Alright, so would anyone like to make a motion for that, please?
I could make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Alrighty, all in favor of moving the Cedar Grove declarations down to a regular line item to create a resolution and then approve the remaining consent agenda?
Roll call.
Thank you. Ben?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright. I'm now going to read a statement. On February 26, 2024, the City Council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of City Administrator Mike Roth. The closed meeting was continued to February 28, 2024, and then again to March 27, 2024, which is the date that marked the conclusion of the closed meeting. In accordance with governing law, at this council meeting, which is the next possible open council meeting following the previously mentioned meeting, this City Council is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation reached by the council. As Chairperson of this meeting, I will now provide a brief summary. As this is a new process for the city, I'll provide a summary of the feedback form we used for context, along with a summary of the conclusion reached by the council from the evaluation. The City Council and the City Administrator's direct reports provided feedback, all using the same form. The form included a scoring matrix and comments section. Categories covered were overall leadership, effective communication, staff engagement, work planning, operational responsibilities. Composite staff scoring reflects meeting or exceeding expectations for staff engagement and work planning. The council focused on leadership, communications, and operations. Areas meeting or exceeding expectations include provides oversight for city finances, including budgeting and reporting, planning for investments in future city projects, ensures regulatory compliance requirements for city operations are met. Areas identified for improvement include strategic planning with focus on expected outcomes, operational efficiencies with better use of technology, communications to the council and with the public, strength in city partnership with our local businesses and residents, and the working relationships with our external partners. City Administrator Roth is an experienced city leader who does an excellent job in managing city finances and the city staff respects his leadership. The mayor and City Council are grateful to have City Administrator Roth in this position and thank him for his hard work on behalf of the city. We look forward to working together to make positive change and ensure City Administrator Ross' continued success. And now we are moving on to our newly approved item, which is a resolution for the Cedar Grove declarations. And in just a moment, yes?
Thought we had to do the consent agenda though, because we moved a piece out.
We voted.
And we approved that, but now we have to go back and, I think you voted on the consent agenda as you discussed it being changed.
Okay.
Yeah, very good.
Now let me pull up my sheet. We are moving on to page 13 so I can get the correct. I just closed the wrong one. I closed the before updated one instead of the updated one. Let me just pull that up in just one second if you would please. David, why now it's tracking. May I look at yours for a minute so I can get the right? My wonderful internet is too slow. Because we need to get the title correct of our newly added amendment on here. And at this time, I'd like Teresa Baitit, Director of, Executive Director of our EDA, to possibly give us a little update on what this all means. But in the meantime, what this is, is a resolution for amendment and restated declarations of covenants, conditions, easements, and restrictions for Cedar Grove Business Park in Grand Marais, Minnesota, and we will attach a resolution number to that.
It's 2024-24.
Okay.
And I'm just about finished writing it here.
Alrighty.
Happy to read you some words if you'd like.
Well, would you like to just give us a little summary while Mike finishes getting ready?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Benson and counselors. So this amended and restated declaration of covenants comes before you. It started, if you recall, you rezoned two Cedar Grove lots, you convert, rezoned them to residential to allow for conveyance to the HRA for some housing there. So that started the conversation of, well, within the existing declaration of covenants, you cannot do residential housing as a primary use under these existing covenants. But in the practice of removing them, we looked at the entire document and said, what are other things that could be updated here? So some important ones to note is that it also had language in there that you couldn't, government office or government facility shall require a conditional use permit. So removing that language and just saying, follow the zoning of a business park also allows the city of Grand Marais us to convey to you for the animal shelter. It also streamlined some of the language to just say, follow the, you know, setbacks, zoning, screening, lighting, follow the existing zoning ordinance that's in place with the city of Grand Marais. There was a lot of contradiction between the two. Sometimes ours was a little bit more restrictive, sometimes yours was a little bit more restrictive. And I think it just created a lot of confusion for current lot owners, future lot owners, the EDA, the city of, you know, which one are you following if you're going to get permits? And so what you'll see is the new amended and restated declaration of covenants, covenants streamlines a lot of it to say, follow the existing zoning ordinance of the city of Grand Marais for a business park zoned. It required the consent of at least 75% of current lot owners with one lot being one signature. We did get that. And then it also requires duly adopted resolution by the EDA and City Council. EDA voted at their March 19th meeting. I'll turn it back to you if you have any other questions.
Any questions by council?
So essentially, this is just aligning your rules with our rules, essentially?
Correct. Yes. And moving those two parcels that were rezoned to residential out of the covenants.
Gotcha.
As they're not part of the business park anymore.
Okay.
I also think it, you know, signals a very real reality that who at the EDA is like a zoning, you know, like no one's out there policing this, no one's out there as a inspector, I guess is a better word for it. So I think we were just acknowledging that we should just align with the existing zoning ordinance.
Gotcha. Very good.
Craig, did you have any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure. I can't see you up on the screen tonight, that's why I want to make sure we're not missing you.
Yeah, I know. It's okay.
I think we need to see him. I mean, I think legally, we need to see him.
Wait, come on, really?
Yeah. And he needs to see us.
Text you a picture.
I just miss you Craig, sorry man.
Craig, do you have a second device there where you can join and then we can see you on the screen?
Is that a real thing?
I have my, I have an iPad.
Okay, I'm going to send you the, open up the meeting link on your iPad.
Yeah, that's what I was waiting for actually. So you sent me an email?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was making comment because I just couldn't see the big screen.
Yeah, but I'm glad you did.
But we can't see him. Either way, so, yeah, okay. I thought it was just me not having my, I assume in these offices, they look at these small screens?
Yeah, and so you'll need to, you turn on the screen if you don't do your signal. And.
That's it.
Oh. So Craig, you should have that.
I think.
You should have that meeting list now, Craig.
Um, wait for it.
No signal. That's interesting, no signal.
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
I have the signal.
Okay. So maybe we, can we get him on the big screen at all?
Yeah.
Because then we could just twist the screen.
Yeah.
Perfect.
These little ones are showing HDMI1 is no signal. And now it's going to turn itself off.
Just five seconds.
Yeah. Seems like a good idea.
Done.
That pretty good picture Tracy.
Yeah, I don't have a.
It's like a politician in that picture, doesn't he?
Yeah, he does.
I don't have a link to push.
I'm just going to do that one more time.
Okay.
It's a new night in a new room. Getting all the wrinkles ironed out.
Down to the old pad?
Of course, if we move the screen too much, well.
It pivots.
Well, I just meant like, we want to make sure Patrick can still.
Hang on a second. There you go.
I don't need to see it.
There you go. Ask to join.
We don't need to see that. The way this system works, whatever's on this screen is what the public is seeing on the YouTube channel.
Okay.
So I'm going to try to only like switch to Craig when we're asking for Craig's input. So if you can plug in Craig and I'll switch to you today, so we can see you now.
Hey.
I'm going to do one more thing before we.
I keep hitting it by mistake. Call me pencils.
I know. Pretty exciting.
Oh my goodness.
King size Sharpie.
So Craig, you, oh.
Now we're going to get in trouble for sniffing through the desk.
That's right.
Yeah.
On camera, yeah, live streaming it, we're live streaming that.
Can't see you guys, I can see you.
Perfect, okay.
Alright.
Good.
Yay.
Well, this is a good practice, well, you know, we'll be here for a while and we'll get some of this figured out.
Okay, so I'm going to leave it here and let's Craig start.
Okay. So, you were about to say something.
City Council Resolution 2024-24, approving Cedar Grove Business Park amended and restated declaration of covenants, conditions, easements, and restrictions. I wish I had a shorthand for that because I'm going to say it three more times. Whereas the Cook County Grand Marais Economic Development Authority adopted resolution, I'm not sure yet, at the regular meeting of March 19th, approving the amended such and such. And whereas the original declarations require any amendments to be adopted via resolution by the City Council, now therefore be it resolved, the Grand Marais City Council hereby approves the amended included here as Exhibit A.
2024-11.
Dash 24.
Dash 24.
Our resolution.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
It's sick that I remember that, but.
That is the resolution you are being asked to approve.
Alright.
I would make that motion.
Alright. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Craig. Any further questions or discussions? Alright, oh boy. All in favor of Resolution 2024-24, amended and restated declaration of covenants, condition easements, and restrictions for Cedar Grove Business Park, Grand Marais, Minnesota? Craig?
Aye.
Thank you. Ben?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Aye.
Michael?
Yeah.
Alright, and with that, we are complete.
Thank you.
Thank you Teresa. Appreciate it. Moving on, we have our next resolution, 2024 County Road 12 Municipal Consent. And that's on page 48. I didn't know if this meant a visit for Robbie tonight, but if not, are there any comments you wanted to make, Mike, on this?
I'm sure Robbie would be happy to visit a meeting and present this project if he wanted him to. The municipal consent resolution is one that we've done for any project where the county is doing work with certain state funding in the city limits on county roads. So, most of this project is not in the city limits, but the around the corner part is anyway, so I know he would appreciate the municipal consent.
Did anyone have any questions or anything on this to begin with at all?
To me, it seemed pretty straightforward. We want him to do it. And that looks like a plan.
So I will ask that somebody make a motion then?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-23, the County Road 12 Municipal Consent.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further questions or conversation? Alright, we'll start with a roll call vote on this. Craig?
Aye.
Thank you. Ben?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Michael?
Aye.
Thank you, all. Alrighty, now we'll move on to the road maintenance memorandum of understanding. I believe Michael and Ben worked on this with, Ben, with Mike Roth. Would anyone like to kind of give a descriptive on this?
Well, it seemed like it was a follow-up of earlier conversations that, that we had had with the county. Actually, going back to what we kind of ended on where we were thinking about cooperating once again and keeping things more or less same, same. But this MOU is actually going to allow us to gather data about what we're doing, what they're doing, what we're doing, and give us some time because, you know, there's ways that they have of calculating things and, and keeping numbers that we just haven't had in the past and haven't done. But we've created or have a methodology that, that we put forward as a city to the county that seems like it would be, that they would see that as a good thing, of a good, you know, way to kind of get to apples to apples, to talk about like, how much are they spending, how much are we spending, you know, time, all that kind of stuff. So I think it really did reflect a lot of that.
Okay. So then it means there'll be some time to do this to get estimates or ideas about averages or?
This wasn't a great year for us to calculate.
Exactly.
How much snow removal per se we do.
I gave you a baseline.
Right. Not, not much. So yeah, it's definitely going to be at least another year of collecting data and being able to say like, okay, here's what it looks like and that kind of thing. There's not going to be any exchange of monies or anything right away, but, you know, the collecting of the data and comparing notes and making sure that we're all talking about the same things in a similar way.
Sure.
Was part of that, so I'm.
So does the city have to create some processes then for the tracking and whatever?
Yeah, that is, that is part of the deal. But I, I think it'll be good for further conversations down there.
Sure.
Something we should, you know, it's not necessarily stuff we need for us, but in terms of our cooperation with the county, it's, it's like something we should, we can do, and it wouldn't be too onerous. It seems like it was negotiated to a point that.
So you've figured out how you're going to do that?
Well, the city.
Figured out how we're going to do it.
Yeah.
Folks, who are doing it. I think that, no, we haven't had to present it yet, so there could still be some changes.
Mm-hmm.
At, but at, at a minimum, we know how many hours we spend, with which personnel and which piece of equipment in air, in the area that we do for snow removal, and we know what percentage of that is county right away versus city. So, we'll just keep it at that level for starters and I think that'll be useful information.
So is it just snow removal or is it all these items?
It's all these things.
Yeah, okay.
So, again, we're not, the, the difference being, we don't have to track at the same level that they do because it's not required of our funding sources like it is for the county, where they really have a lot of multiple sources they use to pay for things and, and it's important for them to keep track at a pretty detailed level in order to sort through that. We don't have that need. So we're trying to meet them halfway here and provide them with some information so we can have a good conversation about this. The other change that's included in this is we're going to be very deliberate about talking about these services other than snow removal before we do them. So if we're planning on sweeping streets, there's going to be a conversation at a staff level about, hey, we're going to be sweeping streets coming up, should we do Broadway? I mean, I, I assume the answer will, will be us on stuff like that, but we're going to, instead of just assuming, now we're actually going to also talk about it beforehand, because we heard that from the county as well. And some of these things, they might not need us to do, that they have another means or method they want to use instead. So this is good, means more communication and more data, and that'll just help us get through this conversation.
So that would mean potentially, I'm just trying to think this out loud for a minute because the street thing can be confusing, that would mean Wisconsin Street, Broadway, Fifth out here?
Um, yep, Fifth, Eighth.
Fifth, and?
And County Road Seven.
Seven.
And then the Gunphone Trail, County Road 12.
Mm-hmm. So I've hit the main ones in town, right? Broadway, Wisconsin, and Fifth, and Eighth.
Yeah.
Okay. That was good to summarize because it took me a while to master that and the general public probably doesn't, is not always aware of that. So, okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Bill?
I don't.
Okay. Craig, did you have any questions or comments on this?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we just need to approve this memo? Okay.
If you're willing, please do.
Sure, alright. Would anyone like to make a motion for, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Grand Marais and the county of Cook, Minnesota?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Alright, any further questions or comments? Alright, Craig's on the screen, so I will start with Craig for.
Aye.
Thank you. Ben?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Alright, and with that, we are all set, well, everyone's set to go to work.
Yes.
On that one.
Yes.
Alright, shifting gears, I would like to share my screen, so let me do that. Do you see, so I'm sharing. There we go, alright. I received this email and I believe it was sent out to the council, so you've all had a chance, I believe, to read this, but for the general public, I wanted to have this out, this. wanted to have this out this evening. This, as I said, was sent out to us, and it includes specifically stating, "The City of Grand Marais, including Grand Portage, this similar project is also going to Cloquet, Minnesota, and Boy's Fort as well." And this grant and project is being administered by Northspan out of Duluth. It's a part of a rural Minnesota community safety project. The first step that they are asking our community to do is fill out a survey, and they would like that done by May seventeenth. It's online. I did that survey, mostly to find out more what this has entailed and have just a better understanding of it, and encourage everyone, if you have not, to also do that. And of course, that, if you have other questions, anyone, you can reach out to Amber Lewis at Northspan, and that's A-Lewis@Northspan.org. And I'm just gonna switch over to the press release that went out for a minute, just to summarize. As I said, the two communities are the Cloquet area and the Grand Marais area. And so, that did lead me, and Mike had brought this up as well, have we let our larger county know? And once I did the survey and realized this total focus on safety, so I shared this with our county administrator, our county attorney, Sheriff Eliason, Public Health with Allison McIntyre, and I've had a response from the county attorney and from Allison that, no, they were not sent any of this information. They are going to contact Northspan to see if they can be helpful. And I'm also now motivated, I'm going to make sure that we get in contact with Grand Portage, just to make sure. I will double-check with Alyssa Hanson down at Northspan.
That was listed right on there, wasn't it?
Yes. That's why I just assumed they would, you know, be a part of it. And the first thing, as I mentioned, they'd like is this survey is part of the Rural Minnesota Community Safety Project and the collaborative effort by Nonviolent Peace Force and Northspan, aimed at enhancing safety, well-being, and security in the Cloquet, Grand Marais areas. One of the other things that they will be doing out of this is a story circle, and if you're interested in participating in that, you can respond. That's also an online link. Now, have we put this on our city website yet, or no? Can we do that, Patrick, so people can get to these links? Okay. And the two communities have been selected for this work, for this work, because they recently participated in the inclusion learning cohorts as part of the Welcoming Community Program. So, this was precipitated by something within our community, which I do believe I participated in some time ago. So, I am just making this right now for awareness, and that's, unless people have any other questions or comments, I don't have anything more on that. And I will, uh, stop sharing.
Done.
Yep.
No more sharing.
So, I won't further that. So, and with that, I'll move on to council and staff reports. Craig, do you have some reports?
Do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Covered the last meeting.
All right. Ben?
I don't.
Okay. Not quite for Bill. Maybe we should have a meeting, and we, I promised, and I totally forgot, we needed to talk about committee assignments, and when it didn't get on the agenda, and we need to help you get organized and into some of those. In the meantime, please get yourself a League of Minnesota Cities sign-in, which I know is part of, Patrick, and Patrick's been gone, but we gotta get you linked up with that. And there's some online courses, most, we need, we need some onboarding, but also get you in there. There are some very simple online classes that would be very informative, you know, open meeting laws and just your responsibility as a counselor and a lot of inform, and there's just also a lot of informative information in there. They're a very good source for us. So, we'll get focused on that. This has been kind of crazy last couple of weeks, moving and closing them. So, we are not, we don't want to leave you behind in all of this, on that. Okay. Michael? Take your parts? Nothing? None?
We've got a library tomorrow.
Okay. We'll look forward to next time.
Yeah.
All right. I have two meetings. I went to the Creative Economy Collaborative. Did I say that correctly? They had a meeting last week, a lot of focus on their bylaws and kind of reviewing their board, their board membership, and just sort of regrouping and reorganizing. And then the last and first topic of conversation was, and Craig probably has even more current details, but the Community Connection that sits down there. So, Dave Turstig said, and you probably all noticed, they're back there finishing that up now.
Yeah.
And they are also respons, the, the park board is also responsible for the recognition for George Morrison that will be up there, which apparently is not quite a plaque, Dave said.
I haven't seen it, so, well, I'll get to...
Not quite a plaque.
Well, I thought that was the right language, and Dave said, "Not quite." But that's the...
Black-sized, maybe?
Finished piece that is still the park board's, and the reason I'm saying this is because the CEC has the responsibility for the kiosks that were part of the Highway sixty-one.
Right. Yep.
And so, when all this comes together, there's always been the thought that there would be a grand opening or celebration for this, and they want this coordinated if possible.
Yeah.
So, that was the conversation in this meeting, and now Dave has said, which I think's a great idea, that this could be done, and they could, the building of the Community Connection could meet this deadline for Memorial Day weekend. The CEC wondered if it should be during the Wooden Boat Show, but I think we could do that sooner and really keep a highlight on all this work that's been done by the city, both from the Highway sixty-one redo and that Community Connection, and really keep it a distinctive butt. And I think that's really, sits with the park board? It's their celebration? Would that be the way to look at that? Craig, were you about to say something?
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't, I don't think we set a date, and I haven't seen what is being made, but the, this, the dedication to George Morrison, I think Stacy Drouillard is doing that, making it? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But that's got nothing to do with the, the other...
The kiosks, right.
The kiosk, yeah. It's separate from the kiosk, it has nothing to do with the Community Connection landing itself. It's different, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, Dave said that you had your, not you, but the park board or his group had that all ready to roll and moving along, and it would be time, and so...
Right.
We'll go from there, and we'll look forward. And if you need any, like, literal help from the council, I'm sure we'd love to all help when you have your...
Yeah.
Open house or celebration for that.
Right.
So...
I was just waiting for, I'm just waiting for it to get finished. I saw pictures of it now, so I know that they're putting up the structure. There was quite a delay there for a while, but I think they're, they promised to have it done by a certain time, so...
Yep. All right. So, that's my update on the CEC, and then we had an EDA meeting. We talked, it's been in the works. The executive director has been working on strategic planning, and it looks like we'll be doing that in June for the board. We had, at the other meeting, approved her working with Molly Larson Sweetwater Design for their website redo, and then we approved a partial loan forgiveness for Lutz and Recreation. And if you may or may not caught, this Monday was the IRR meetings, and the proposal sitting that affected the city was the Heights project at the top of the hill, the Mayhew Construction downtown, and then the Bjorkberg with John Peters around the corner here, and those were all funded by the IRR with their request amount, so they did that approval on Monday. So, that's what I have for council and staff reports, and then I just have a few. So, today, well, I signed, co-signed with Mike Roth for the document scanning and shredding and everything, all things documents. So, that contract, which, as Mike explained last time, could have variance to it, but that was sitting at fifty-five thousand as an estimate that I signed off on, and I see the trucks were here today.
Truck came and is parked in our lot right now, and tomorrow will go away.
So, so far?
It's full. We're packed out.
Cool. Well, I'm glad their timing hit to the weather.
Yeah. They were gonna come on Monday, and that wasn't gonna work, so...
Oh, it was a little bit, just like, yeah, how did, how has everything gone for Chris? I know they had some weather effects, too, with the liquor store, but it looks like they're...
It's delayed us as well. Chris and his staff have moved a lot of product already. At this point, we're in holding pattern, as we were waiting for a couple of new shelves to show up for the Beaver House that should show up tomorrow. We just can't set anything else up over there or really bring anything else over there without closing the store we got. We don't want to do that yet. Yeah. So, we, we'll push that back, and instead of trying to make this shift this week, we're gonna do it early next week instead.
And anything, is the asbestos piece coming together, or you still have things that, I don't mean like the contract, but just like literal things?
Yeah. The, I think we finally today got the last bit of information we needed. The drywall that's in the building won't need to be handled by an abatement contractor. The excavation contractor that has the demolition can handle it. There is some vinyl tile and mastic on a few spots in the building that do need to be abated, and we're getting a contractor lineup for that.
And they don't take over until that's done, right?
Well, they're gonna, McGough's gonna be on-site next week.
Okay.
So, their construction trailer show up next week, their, their onsite supervisor will be here full-time starting next week, pieces of equipment will start showing up, some, some stuff like that, but they, there won't be any demolition starting, I wouldn't think, for a little bit yet.
Because that piece needs to be done first, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. Do you have anything else?
As long as we're talking about that, save the date. Right now, we're tentatively looking at Friday, April twelfth, to do a groundbreaking ceremony, and also then walk over to the Beaver House and have a little open house event. Planning has barely begun, so we're gonna hit that hard next week after we've moved into the Beaver House, but our focus right now is still this transition.
Sure.
But we'll hopefully have a role for each of you in that event. We'll need your help, is what I mean to say, and so, if you're going to be around that afternoon and evening, let us know, and we'll keep you informed about as the planning moves on.
I graciously volunteered that the city council would love to participate in an open house for the liquor store, if it meant serving food or whatever, to help them out, that we would be more than happy to do that. Oh, so that's a Tuesday?
No. It's a Friday.
Did you, oh, did you say, oh, because I'm looking in March.
Yeah. April's, it's Friday.
It's October.
Yeah. I was looking in the wrong month. Sorry about that.
I'll have to do some pre-work or something, because I'll be out of town that day. Oh, that's okay.
You'll have to bake something ahead of time.
Be there in spirit.
All right.
I've got one more item I want to show everybody. I might present. I think I am. Indeed, I am. This parcel right here, perhaps you recognize to the lower left of the red one, is where the Heights apartment building is going to be constructed. So, on this screen, you can see up yonder on the left, the Blue Moose on the right, and the piece in between is the Heights project. They've been doing some stormwater management planning for the site. They'll need to build a pond, and then the water needs to go somewhere. The choices are either it comes to the highway, which is not easy, because there's really nowhere for it to go when it gets there, or to go back towards the ravine, which you can just barely make out in this picture. This red highlighted square is a piece of tax-forfeited property that the Heights originally talked to the county about acquiring, and, and the process of going through that conversation, it actually is easier if the city acquires it and then allows the developer to use it for stormwater purposes. Whether we do that via a license agreement, or whether we can reconvey the property to them in some way, it's actually easier for us to be involved in this transaction. So, there isn't anything that you have to say yes to tonight, except, am I able to continue talking to the county about acquiring this on behalf of the city for the use of the developer for stormwater purposes? If it's, you're not interested in that, then I'll let everybody know. If you are, then more details to come at a future meeting when, when we actually have some action to take. Yeah. Well, yeah, let's, I would say we should. At least take those steps and get some more information until we know.
I'm gonna ask a dumbbell question, because if it was, you probably would have done it this way, but is this something that needs to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Group, or?
Is that residential, R1?
It is. Right behind, yeah, all that, all that that abuts, that area, so, R1.
Or would at some point in time, but in the meantime, you would just continue trying to work this out? Or it doesn't have to at all?
Doesn't necessarily have to go to the planning commission. No.
Okay.
When, yeah. Let me, let me just back up a little bit here, so you can get a little more context.
Plan together on a piece of R1, it might, right?
Well, yeah. I suppose that's why we need more details.
Well, there's an erosion issue that, right along that ravine and...
Yeah. I think that one of the benefits to the city's involvement in it is that they're gonna put water somewhere on this property, and it's gonna go off of this property, and for us to know where and to be involved in it at this level means we can cover who's responsible for what with a developer's agreement. I don't know that that has to go to the planning commission or not, but we certainly will have a lot more ability to be involved in the conversation if it's on our property. If it's, you know, if we're not involved, then they'll have to find another way to acquire the property from the county, or they'll have to just relocate the facility to the piece they have, which means they had talked about potentially a Phase Two happening, and it just, there would probably wouldn't be room for a Phase Two.
Are there any reasons why we wouldn't do this?
Yeah, we'll see. Would be any cost?
Uh, we wouldn't, I don't think we should assume that we're gonna have to pay for any of the improvements, first of all. If it's acquired by the city, we wouldn't have to buy it, it could be just given to us at a nominal fee. I think the, it's the alternative of, if we don't buy it, the county's processes to, then they have to offer it for sale to the neighbors. I think they actually did that fifteen years ago. So, just to put this in context, this is a piece of tax-forfeited property that's been tax-forfeited for a very long time.
Okay.
You've maybe seen some recent news about a Supreme Court decision that says if you sell a piece of tax-forfeited property for more than they owed on the taxes, that there's some recompense that needs to happen? That's not related to this piece at all, because this one's been tax-forfeited for so long. There might be neighbors interested in it. In terms of it being residential, there, there aren't utilities anywhere near it right now, which is probably why it was tax-forfeited in the first place.
Okay. So, at this point, you would just like a motion from us?
If you, if I get head nods that you're willing to talk about this, then I'll put more information together, we'll talk to the county, we'll come back with a full process, and you can talk about it again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Craig? Oops, sorry.
Yeah.
Because I know I have to have him on the screen, right?
Michael, let me stop sharing. Oh, my goodness. How do I do that?
Stop sharing.
There's Craig. That was a yes? Sorry.
I see the head nod.
Yep. Go ahead, get some information on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Great.
Uh, Ben?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Bill? Michael? All right, very good, thank you. We'll look for more about that. And so since we're on the topic of the Heights in many ways tonight, um, do we need to start getting on schedule for that abatement special meeting?
Everybody got their calendars out now, we can pick a time.
Look at that. Are we going to look at a Wednesday? 'Cause that was kind of the deal, we would do Wednesdays after work. Is that kind of, did it narrow this down a bit, or?
Are people around on the seventeenth of April? That's the mid-month Wednesday.
And this has to be a special meeting?
It doesn't. You can do it in any meeting you want.
No.
It's just, we wanna spend some time with it.
You know, create our abatement policy. Are we having a TIF in that too? Kind of, or?
I don't think so.
Just a tax abatement, okay.
Yeah.
So that was the thing.
This is just for us to get a policy-level conversation about.
Right.
I understand.
To create our policy, and what does it wanna look like? I mean, I looked at a few, some of them even include their application forms and all their process instructions. Some are just their policy, you know, like, whatever. Well, we can get a bunch of samples.
Really, really not helpful.
Yeah, and a lot of them are frank, frankly, just the state statutes restated. But anyways, that's what we'd be working on. So it'd be a working session is really the best way to think about it. Um, does that help?
Yeah, that's seventeen. You proposed that, yeah, I'm fine there.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll send an invitation out.
We usually do this, like, I don't know, five fifteen or five thirty?
Five thirty.
That's fine.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, what date, what date, did you look at? Seventeen?
Yeah.
Yes, Wednesday.
Five clearly? Okay.
All right. Five thirty, April seventeenth. All right. Um, is that everything?
Last thing?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just, in the interest of clarity, wanna make sure that I spent thirty seconds on what Lynda talked about at the beginning of the meeting, that, uh, our default without the trailer is to work with G and G to augment porta-potties this summer. That, that's the strategy we're gonna go with right now, unless we're directed differently. So I, I do feel the need to be able to go back to the business community and at least tell them what the plan is, and I wanna make sure I'm, I'm right about that before I go and tell them.
I think the other piece we talked about is a clear understanding be- because of the concern I heard last week about, and, and we've talked about this, about all of these outside, all that are all budgeted in, and I, I feel that tabled means we've set it aside, but it does need to be finally decided upon. But we also need, I feel, what I've heard is an under, a broader understanding of, of how all this is lying out as part of this, to, to feel good about moving that forward. So, um, and if that aligns with your timeframe, then we could set this all up for, um, the next meeting's agenda.
Put it on the next meeting's agenda.
Yeah. If that fits with your...
The broader picture of the budget.
Yeah, which I think, you know, it's, it's even this aside, I think it would just help us all feel really good about, in general, where that whole project is landing.
We, we can do that. Am I waiting to tell people what the plan is until after that conversation?
Relative to the bathrooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, you can say that's the next steps. And we'll have it on the agenda next time.
What is on the agenda is, is the overall budget.
Well, and back to our tabled item.
Yeah, 'cause we have to take action, my understanding. We would have to take action on that, one note, correct?
Mm-hmm.
No, um, but you did, I mean, I think the, the language of the motion as a table allows for that to happen. So it's not clear, not to me, probably, you're hearing from others, not to them, if you intend to revisit it, or if you don't intend to revisit it.
So if it's tabled, just getting...
If it's tabled forever, then it's tabled, but, but I don't, I don't, yeah, I think we just need to be clear about what we're doing here. Are we gonna talk about this again? You wanna have the bathroom conversation part of an overall budget look at the next meeting, then I can put that together, and I can communicate that.
Well, I understand tabling is setting something aside. That's not a no vote, because that's not what we were voting on. To me, a table is setting it aside for a future time, and I think the other piece about budget is its own thing, because I think it's something we all wanna understand, how all these other pieces fit together for all sorts of other things that could come in front of us in the next few months. That's how I look at it.
Yeah, and I think, though, what you're asking for is just clarity on what, what's happening with the bathrooms, essentially.
Right.
Like, are we gonna go forward with the, the porta-potties? And I, I think if that is what we're doing, and it does seem like that's, I mean, by not doing, that is what we're doing. I mean, I, yeah, I think we can tell them that, yeah, that's, that's probably what's gonna happen, 'cause I think we're also losing our timeline to do anything different than that. It doesn't mean, though, to her point about ADA compliance, I mean, not pretty, but we can get some ADA ones that are just the regular porta-potty, just bigger. At least that's something. We'll alleviate some of that. Question?
Well, I think because this wasn't an item
Yeah.
tonight, it needs to be an item again.
Is that?
Because it wasn't list, you know.
Okay, all right.
All right. All right. Anything else? Right, and with that, we are done for our first meeting in the Commissioner's Room.
Thanks, Cook County.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cook County.
All right.
Have a good night, everyone.